Discussion and possible action on the exceptions of USA Communities Process for Roof Replacement. It's under the Board of Ed.
Dr. Tracy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I could extend the courtesy to Dr. Tracy.
Absolutely.
And if any board members have any questions.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
We have a full contingent here and we hope we accommodate if you have any questions, but I'm sure you won't.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Quick update on the oil tank work that we've been doing over the last few months. We did complete a project at Hill and Plain School back in November, December. And as some of you know, we ran into surprises over there with an electrical connection box that was on top of the old tank and under the ground. So the decision was made to work around that, leave the old tank in place rather than try to work underneath this electrical stuff which could have disrupted the operation of school. So we shifted instead to an above-ground tank. That's all in, it's done. The extra work ran about 60,000 beyond what we had originally planned. And that project was on the Board of Education's dime. And so, working from their capital reserve account, we covered that and the project is finished. Then we turned to the tank in the parking lot behind the Lewis administration building over at 50 East Street. And making good progress, got to the old tank, and then discovered a couple of serious problems. One, a considerable amount of ledge under the old tank, which meant that the old tank was not buried at the level that it's supposed to be buried at. I don't know what the regulations were back in the olden days, but regulations now require the top of the tank to be at least so far underneath the parking lot. And in order to achieve that, it was necessary to eliminate a substantial amount of ledge to give us a hole deep enough to put the tank in. And the next surprise we ran into was an old sewer line running out of the back of the building. And those of you who are familiar with the property, under the parking lot, down the hill to the main sewer line, to the, I think it's to the east of the property. And so that had to be dealt with, and a lot of digging and replacement of pipe and so forth. That's been done, sewer is back the way it should be. But as a result of that, we now had to move the tank to the north several feet to stay away from the new sewer line. Bottom line, and I think you may have seen a spreadsheet that we passed around on Friday, that project is also running about $61,000 beyond what was originally appropriated by this body. And the figures that I presented also included an $18,500 contingency. For the balance of the work, we still need to put the tank in, cover it over, and then trench from the tank to the building and install the oil lines back to the school. That should go easier, I hesitate to say, but should go easier because the oil lines are nowhere near at the depth that the bottom of the tank is. So we're hoping that that will allow us to avoid any further ledge issues. I made the decision back when we ran into this trouble around Christmas time to proceed with the project. I considered it urgent that the work get done, really for three reasons. One, we're under pressure from the Department of Environmental Protection, the State Department, to get this work done. The tank's lifetime actually expired December 31st, so we want to make sure the state knows. We're not dragging our feet, we're hitting some headwinds, but we're going to get this done as quickly as we can. Second, we've got a big canyon open in the back of that building, which is more than an inconvenience for citizens who want to visit our building and have to park out on the dirt lot there. But it's also, it's a hazard, and it could even be an attractive nuisance. We're thankful that, you know, the fencing has been good and nobody's bothered it. But I regard that as a problem to be dealt with. And then, the longer it stays open, every time it rains, the walls of the pit cave in, we've got to dig more out, so we're incurring more cost the longer we leave it open. So I made, based on that, I made the decision to proceed. Kevin Monret here has been great in working with the contractors and keeping the work going. I'll be reporting to the school board night after next to let them know the same information that we're sharing with you. Checked with the mayor back late December, and we've had a couple of conversations about this as the work has gone on. We hope we're getting to the end, we hope we won't need the contingency. But including that, we're asking you to appropriate an additional $80,000 that will allow us to complete the work. Obviously, whatever we don't need, if we don't run into further problems, we would return to you and appreciate your help. Let me stop with that, I don't know whether any of the board members or Kevin wanted to add, or perhaps Mr. Mayor, you or the other council members have some questions.
Councilman Smith.
So, Dr. Tracy, I know that you must have relied on someone else with respect to the pricing to feel comfortable with it, so who is that so we can ask them the questions that we have regarding the pricing?
You don't think an old social studies teacher would know?
I think they're smarter than that.
Kevin, can you help out with that?
So what size tank was in the ground and what size tank are we proposing to put in?
10,000 gallons is the answer to both.
So what's the minimum cover needed over the tank?
The minimum cover now is, I believe, and I can double check, 18 to 24 inches. We were previously only three inches under asphalt. As a matter of fact, when we got to the bottom of the hole and removed the old steel tank, we could see where our predecessors had stopped excavating because they hit the same ledge that we were hitting just recently.
So if we need 24 inches of cover, the tank's sitting at Hill and Plain, right?
Yes, that's right.
So that's an eight-foot diameter tank, so we need 10-foot depth?
No, you need more because it has to be completely wrapped in pea gravel, so we're down to a depth of about 15, 16 feet.
Okay. So why didn't we go to a smaller tank then to eliminate the blast, the removal of the ledge?
We still had the tank on hand from Hill and Plain project.
Go with the restocking fee, have been on that tank and go to like a 6,000 gallon tank?
The, I don't remember offhand, but we did end up purchasing a 6,000 gallon above-ground for Hill and Plain. The only problem is, would be where do we locate it, E Street where it's an active parking lot?
No, 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 I'm saying underground, because I looked up that tank manufacturer. A 6,000 gallon tank actually has a two-foot less diameter, so that's three foot less of ledge you would have to remove. The tank also would have been $6,000 less than expense, so now would you not have the expense of the $25,000 in ledge removal, you'd be saving six grand on the tank as well? So that'd be a savings of $31,000, plus you wouldn't have the trucking of all the extra material on the order of 8640, 8600 for compaction, and the 5500 for moving it to the town garage.
Well, you would have had more compaction because we still had to remove boulders and ledge from the existing hole, so we're actually making that hole bigger in order to get rid of the obstacles in our way.
Do you have a written response that you're filling in with peystone?
Well, we have to fill it in with whatever fits the hole. We can fill in with soil whenever able and backfill with pea gravel as the code requires. But to get back to the original question, why didn't we go with a 6,000 gallon tank? We actually pursued that, but it would add another 10 to 12 week lead time on purchasing the tank, and that wasn't an option for the DEP.
So we didn't dig any test pits to see how deep ledge was and how deep the tank was before we started the $95,000 project that's now turning into a $175,000 project?
That was not specified.
We did do some type of a ground survey that...
Yes, we did underground penetrating radar, we did call before you dig.
So if we did the ground penetrating radar, didn't that give you the approximate depth to the top of the tank?
No. It only tests for utilities and any sort of underground issues that we may find. It couldn't see the ledge through the existing steel tank.
No, 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 no. The ground penetrating radar, when we're locating utilities like that, it tells us the approximate depth to it, which would have told you to the top of the tank.
Correct.
So that would have told you the tank was a couple inches under the ground. So before we started the project with the ground penetrating radar, because this is what we do for a living, I'm a civil engineer, we would have known that it didn't have proper cover. So before we started the project, we would have known that we should go with an alternative tank. So I have more questions, I have a lot of questions. So is the ledge that was removed still on site today, the piles of ledge that are in the back corner?
Yes.
Okay. So in your response, it says that the monthly rental of the jackhammer, the 7,500 pound hammer, is 9571 plus 2,000 mobilization. It says this is not a daily or hourly charge, we have been using the jackhammer for two to three weeks. So the jackhammer's gone now?
Nope, it's still on site.
The jackhammer on site's a 550 pound hammer, not 7,500. There is no way on earth, this is my business, okay? So I had two different contractors coming. We're getting taken for a ride by our contractor. That hammer is like, take a 7,500 pound hammer, there's like 20 to 30 yards of ledge that were removed, total. There's two piles back there. And that's not a triaxle back there, that's just a regular dumpster truck that moved that material. And a 7,500 pound hammer would have removed that in literally four hours. So to say that we rented that for a month, they're lying to you. That hammer is not on site. I can tell you as a fact right now, your contractor is lying to you. Then it says excavating and rock disposal, $13,200 extra, but the tank only shifted north about 10 feet, right?
About 12 feet, that's right.
And that costs us $13,200 in extra excavation to remove an extra 40 yards?
It also had to...
That's $300 a yard.
It also had to go down another eight feet.
No, 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 no. The existing tank diameter was eight feet.
I understand that.
The cover was about six inches. Now we're going down another five feet, six feet max. And if we used the right tank, we wouldn't have to go down anymore because we would have just had this six-foot diameter tank instead of an eight-foot. We could have held the bottom of the current tank and then had our two feet of cover. So then we, so we got this jackhammer rental number, which is absolutely inaccurate. We have the excavating and rocks disposal number, which is absolutely inaccurate. We have the moving dirt to backfield for parking usage of 8640. They say that this takes two days using three employees at $4,300 a day. Now first, we're removing, they're assuming that this material's not coming back. This doesn't make any sense to me because this material has to come back into the hole, but I guess if it's frozen, you're saying you're going to use peystone, right?
That's right.
So if you're using peystone, peystone doesn't need to be compacted, but we're going to give them an extra $8,600 to compact peystone, which doesn't need to be compacted by code.
All those prices were just estimates based on what could happen, that's not to say...
But we know what, we know what's happening because now the material's been moved. We were told in this that it took them three days with three guys, which I don't even know what the third guy does because you've got your loader operator and the guy doing the dumpster. And I can tell you, if you know what you're doing, it's not going to take more than two days. And we're paying each guy, on average, $183 per hour. A regular triaxle which holds 16 yards of material, which is double that truck, is 90 bucks an hour with a guy in it. So they're taking us for a ride on that number. The extra compaction, it's absurd. If we have the same sized tank and we're overexcavating slightly, you're literally there with a jumping jack, maybe an extra $500? And then clean fill disposed at the town garage, which, based on here, it says, first it says how many yards of clean fill was taken, this number greatly depends on the weather, so it's impossible to tell how much frozen will be removed. How many yards of clean fill that was taken to DPW is not part of the original contract to be removed. Under a normal tank replacement of the same size, there shouldn't be any extra fill. This was an abnormal tank removed. But all we did was go 10 feet further, so the tank's eight-foot diameter, so you go eight by 10 by 15, right? Something like that? So that's, let me just run that number quick because I want to have these numbers. So that's an extra 40 yards of material, right? Then you figure you've got to go another four feet deep, right? That hole was something like 50 by 25 by 4. So we're talking another 160. So we're talking 200 yards of material, of which we're going to reuse a portion of it. So let's assume we're taking 150 yards to public works, right? So when we do that, it's costing us $36 a yard to move the material to DPW. A normal trucking company charges about six.
I think that's an oversimplification of what's going on because of the amount of boulders.
Okay, so please explain so I can understand because this is absurd.
The amount of boulders and ledge that we encountered kept causing the hole to have to get bigger and bigger because the boulders have to be excavated to get to the depth we're looking for.
So where are the boulders? Because here's pictures of them. So is this the, where are the boulders? Because this is the site.
The ones that were able to be hauled off were, and then whatever is kept in the back is clean filled to be reused if possible.
So where's the boulder? I mean, there can't be any more material than was here. I mean, what was there, a truckload of boulders maybe?
No, several, several.
How many?
That was, that was the reason why you had to rent the jackhammer for a month, is that we were encountering them daily.
But if we're removing the boulders, they got a machine from WI Park there that could lift the boulders. Why would we jackhammer the boulders when you could just load them in the truck and take them away?
Well, there was a part of that, and then the jackhammer was utilized to remove the ledge, so there's two different issues.
So do we have the tickets of the material removed?
No, not yet, that's why I said that what you have in front of you...
So how are you before us with a request if you don't even have the cost to date compared to the cost you're asking?
Right.
I'm just telling you, I'm not in favor of this. This is absurd. I can tell you, with over almost 20 years of experience, and I'm telling the Board of Ed of construction experience, these numbers are absolutely, absolutely absurd, unacceptable, and ridiculous. I don't know who's in charge of overseeing the project, but at this point, I am very concerned, extremely concerned. Because we entrusted with you on these projects, large amounts of money. You may remember the budget. I am the one who fought to give the oil tank money on the town side of the budget. Now the Hill and Plain tank goes over $60,000. What was that, like a $90,000 job to start with, something like that? And now we have a 90, $97,000 job. That's $87,000 over budget potentially. That's unacceptable. Because if we just did a little bit of work up front, like, I'm talking test pits that would have cost $1,200, we would have had no change orders. We would have saved $87,000. Now we have the sewer line, right? Sewer lines, $5,000. They replaced about 30 feet of sewer line. So that's about 100, well, they did a clean out too, that's about, what, six feet tall? So 36 feet of pipe, so it's $150 per foot for pipe. That's normally 20 to 30 bucks. So every single one of these prices is like five times reality. And you said the oil tank line to the building's going to go in a different location, but the oil tank line's right coming into the hole. So if you're putting the oil tank line back in the general location of where it is, we know ledge is 10 to 12 feet deep, why are we asking for $18,500 to replace the oil tank line from the oil tank to the building when we know ledge is at about 10 feet, maybe there's some boulders that need to be removed? But I wish, if I could do this for a living, I'd quit my job tomorrow. But I can tell you I am voting no to this request because at some point, people need to be held accountable. Because when projects like this are managed, we are entrusting people to manage them properly. And this project is not being managed properly, and was not managed properly, and is unacceptable. I valued the taxpayers' dollar. When I went to fight and battle back last June for the oil tank money for all the oil tanks, this is the last thing on earth I would have expected to happen.
Councilman Francis.
I'm not sure if this is a question for you or Dr. Tracy or you, but in the normal process of doing things with the Board of Ed such as this, who oversees? I mean, to me, what stands out is if you're digging and you're still hitting ledge and you're digging and you're bringing in and you're taking out ledge, you're taking out material, at some point, someone should have had someone to go to and say, gee, this is what we're doing, it seems like it's costing a lot of money, time equals money. And maybe someone would have said, how about a smaller tank? How about two small tanks? How about something else? What is your process? Who oversees, not just what you do, but anything? I mean, we've had roof issues, people replacing shingles and nobody knows why it's approved, how it got approved, but hey, the guy went out and spent 10 grand every year. So I have to go along with Paul. I'm not at all happy that this is dollars that we could certainly use in other places. Not saying you didn't need to do the project, of course. But at some point, somebody has to say, you just don't keep digging and removing things without somebody saying, gee, I wouldn't do this in my own life. I mean, if it was your dollar, would you have done this in your own backyard? I don't think so. You probably would have called somebody in to say, this seems like it's out of line or what else can we do? I don't know that it's out of line, but what else are my options? So what's the process, Board of Ed?
Well, can I help you out there? Dave Lawson, Chairman of the Board. Throughout this process, we were in communication with the mayor's office throughout the process.
But he's not an expert in that either. I'm asking what you do.
Well, you're asking me about...
What do you do when your facilities people or whoever's working on a job, David? Who do they go to to say, I think we've got a problem here, or I'm already way over my budget?
And they have routinely let us know that. We did have an extra tank because we ran into similar problems at Hill and Plain. I'm sorry, Councilman...
But who do you go to if they go to you?
Samansky that you disagree with the prices, the contracts...
I don't disagree with it.
No, 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 no.
I completely, wholeheartedly believe they're not true.
Okay, but we don't have...
Just to be clear.
But we don't have the contractor here or anything like that. Bottom line is, this project has to be completed. DEEP...
The tank's removed, DEEP doesn't care now, there's no contamination, correct?
Okay, fair enough. So, but we do have to, if we don't, if we want to halt the project, fine, we can halt the project, but let's...
But David, please, I hate to interrupt you, but just back up, before you go all the way off on this road, I just asked you a question. What is the process in the Board of Ed for somebody who's working on a project that is quite a bit of money here, 97 or whatever it started at? At some point, it went over budget, or they thought it was going to, they could see it was going to.
Right.
What do they do?
It goes to our facilities.
And then what does the facilities person do?
They bring it, facilities committee.
And that is, then what do they do?
They bring, well, they make a decision, advisory decision, so to speak.
Are they allowed to make a decision no matter what the value?
It's not binding. So the answer's yes, and it goes to the full board.
I, as the interim superintendent, I'm responsible for everything that goes on in the system, subject to the direction of the board. Mr. Monret kept me posted as we got into trouble in December. We did consider the notion of going to a smaller tank, as he mentioned, and decided not to do that. I did have some conversations with the mayor beginning in late December and again on the 17th of January. The board meets next on the 30th, and per board policy, I have the authority in an urgent or emergency situation to proceed. So I made the decision to do that, and I'll be reporting to the board Wednesday night, I guess, on the status, and we'll show them as much information as we have about the physical work and the cost.
So the process is slower than the actual project, in this case and in other cases? Was the contractor ever brought in in front of the Board of Ed or the facilities committee to say, hey, what's up here?
I did not do that.
I have to say, I don't know that much about excavation, but the very first thing I looked at was the jackhammer. And the first thing I said was, wow, a 7,500 pound hammer, that's pretty big, and it took all this time? You know what I asked myself on this note? How much would it have cost to buy one instead of the renting? So I'm a little concerned, maybe a contractor should have been brought in to talk a little bit. I just say, would you do something like this if it was your own dollars? If it was your own home or your own backyard? Think about that. This is extrapolated up. This is really a project that's double what it was supposed to be. And you're not sure about those end numbers, right, Kevin? So it might even be more. And I just don't understand how you can act as if by saying, David, that, well, you know, it has to be done. Well, like Paul just pointed out, DEEP doesn't care now, it's out of the ground.
Well, I do care. I do care. I think that, you know, we have a building that we need to take care of. You know, that's up to this town council here. Now, might I add, I will say, in this request, I could just...
The contingency?
Yeah, I think, under the circumstances, the change order number three, it would be reasonable to void that because that's purely a contingency. There's nothing there.
So we agreed to change order two?
Pardon me?
Have we agreed to pay change order two to the contractor?
No, it's not paid.
Well then, I am respectfully requesting as a taxpayer, we refuse that change order. I'm also respectfully requesting as a taxpayer, not as a council person, but as someone who pays taxes in this town, that the employee responsible for overseeing this project be held responsible. This is unacceptable. And I would say the same thing to Mayor Bass if it was happening on the town side. And if the council disagrees with me, please speak up now.
I completely concur with you.
Did the contractor give you justification, Kevin, during all of this?
Yeah.
I mean, Paul just started out by saying that the jackhammer is not 7,500, it's 550 pounds. So, nobody caught that.
Here it is. I mean, look at it, you can tell. That fits on their small little excavator.
We've had three different jackhammers there throughout the course of the project.
Well, and did, does somebody look over the invoices? Are they changed? I don't know, I guess I haven't...
So the scope of services then, you said the jackhammering of boulders. So in our contract, in the scope of services, we said when we were removing the tank and the material around the tank, that they could charge us an extra for boulders?
No, boulders was not a part of the original scope of...
But you just said earlier, we paying for this jackhammer to jackhammer those boulders that are in the original contract.
Let him finish his answer.
What I said was, we were using the jackhammer to get through the ledge, we were removing boulders as they became known to us. The contract did not call for that because typically a tank comes out within 30 years and it was already in there based on DEP regs. This is not the case. This is kind of an abnormal tank, as the note says, that was kind of put in however they wanted to.
But it says we've been using the jackhammer for two to three weeks. A 7,500 pound jackhammer would remove that 20 to 30 yards of ledge that's in the back in less than a day. That's a fact.
I would disagree.
I will take you to several sites, Kevin, that are active right now, so we can show you.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Mr. Neal?
I guess my simple question is, you know, when I, my mom was selling her house and there's a little wall that was cracked, and I called up Paul and said, Paul, can you look at this and tell me if I need to get it replaced or not, if it's structurally deficient or not? Because guess what? Paul, I know, is an expert in it. The same thing with Tom was saying about the library committee is, why don't we have more construction people on the committee? This town is full of people that will volunteer their time because of their expertise in different areas, and I just don't understand why we don't use them. Why we pay people to do, why we pay experts to do things, why we don't just take the people in this town that are willing to give their time because they love this town and use their expertise? And now we're here after the fact saying, looking at this bill, like it's padded, and the point you said was, well, these people probably knew that we had this done because the DEP had a window of getting it done, and you know what, let's just pad the bill because they're stuck with us because they don't use us, they're not going to hit the DEP deadline, and they're going to be screwed. And I just don't understand, dude, all that time, why someone wasn't called in and knew what they were doing, and whoever's, whoever's making decisions, at one point you said, you know what, this is beyond my scope, I need to get someone here, no one's doing it.
Just to clarify, so how much does it cost, how much on the town side did we say that we would help with this?
$105,000.
And how much does the Board of Ed have to put in?
Zero.
On this particular one?
Yeah, they're asking for another 78,000, they're asking for 75,000.
So we, the town council, voted $105,000 to help the Board of Ed remove the tank. Does that appear to you?
Correct, yes.
Collaboration.
And now they're asking us for an additional $78,000? Is that, am I hearing that right?
Correct. If the contingency turns out to be necessary.
Okay, what is it right now? $56,000?
It would be...
59?
59.
59. And I would, I would certainly suggest that the, as I said on the handout, you've had change order number three for any amount of 18.5 be backed out, because that is not, that's not there.
Well, I can tell you, as a business owner, if I make a mistake, I have to take responsibility for it. So I agree with Paul. You know, the Board of Ed is going to have to step up to the plate.
It's not even the Board of Ed's money, it's the taxpayers' money. Regardless of where money is coming from, the taxpayers have to fund it, which is-
But, but doing the hindsight twenty-twenty, it's, it's not going to get us any further. I think we should just move on.
Dave, is it possible that your contractor could be asked to go through?
Thank you. I think that would be in order.
Maybe this, turn his pens, might-
I would, I would-
Help him sharpen his pencil.
I think that if we got the questions at very-
Who's the contractor?
ETT.
I think, I think they should come here.
ETT?
I think they should come here and explain to the town council why they are fleecing us. And quite frankly, I've seen this for a decade that I've been sitting at this table. Contractors have a tendency, not only our town, they do it in almost every town that I read a newspaper article on. They hold us hostage here. I'm sorry, we pay an exorbitant amount of money to use the contractors that are either state-approved or mandated by the state. I, I, I'm sorry. This, this number, I couldn't agree with Councilman Samansky more. I'm in the heavy construction business, I think that jackhammer rental absolutely made my head explode when I saw it. Seventy-five-hundred-pound hammer, like Paul said, in a day and a half, would have this whole empty of any rock that was in there.
I think you've, you've raised some good questions, and, well, excuse me.
I, I don't want to make it worse. I really, but I just, I'm here to answer questions, and-
The question was if we-
I believe we have used ETT, and, and the town is also collaborating with ETT, so you might want to be aware of that, on the other tanks. Is that fair to say? So that is my understanding.
Mr. Bass, we had overages on the tanks that we've overseen?
No, that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Okay, and I, I, but I did want to be clear on that. With regards to the process, you're absolutely correct, Councilman Samansky. We ran into this at Hill and Plain. The board did pay an overage from those expenditures, and it was my knowledge that based on the, where we are this evening, to bringing this to light to the council for, for these change orders, based on the conversations that I was privy to with you, Mayor Bass. So that's where we are. I think the board is more than understanding of these questions, of trying to delve into these costs, because they are all taxpayer dollars. It's not the board's money, it's not the town's money, it's everybody's money. And I think that's fair. But in the spirit of candidness, these particular tanks, and I am not in the construction business, there have been some surprises along the way. Can they equate to these dollars? I'm not in the field. But this has not been an easy process. And I, I think that we're trying to get this rectified, but we are here this evening to bring this forward, and that's what we did. We, we, we brought this, these costs to you to see and go through. So we're happy to go back and reexamine, but just did, that's a wrap.
Thank you, Wendy. Walter?
Instead of continuous to, continuously whipping this horse, Paul's got valid points, Tom's got valid points. Katie, let's bring in the contractor, and have the contractor speak to us.
That's fair.
And move, and move on from there.
And please provide us with the copies of the tickets that have already been signed off on and the material removed today.
Please.
You've raised some good questions. We'll, we'll go back. I was going to say, we'll go back again to-
That'll, that'll work for me.
And we'll arrange through the mayor's office when the contractor can be here to answer questions.
And if there, if there are any special questions from any of you, I guess-
Yeah, I'd like to immediately have those tickets, so then we can formulate a specific set of questions.
And we'll do our very best.
Thank you.
One, one last question. So out of the hundred and five thousand, one hundred and eight dollars, what have we spent? Have we given this contractor ninety-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars?
Yes.
That's been paid.
Well?
Okay. That tells me a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Please have them come and talk to us.
Okay, now we're, Walter? I just wanted to say thank you. Now we're on B.
Stay up to play here, it's a little slant, we won't, yeah. Sorry.
Can I just make a correction here? You asked for, Paul, who's, who's Samansky?
They said that the only material removed, you can correct me if I'm wrong, were the boulders.
Right.
So I want the tickets, which is each truck's volume of material that was removed, how many yards per ticket? I want to see the actual tickets, and I want to see that we signed off on each truck leaving the site. That's, I mean, we got Dave Chapinski here, he's more a project manager on the roads, he could tell you. When he's doing the road projects, I'm along those.
All right, we'll do it.
Thank you.
All right, so we're on to USA Communities process for roof replacement?
Yes, so Dr. Tracy?
This one, having learned our lesson on a previous project, we're coming to you ahead of time. As you know, we faced a, a couple of serious roof projects. We've been working on the one at the high school. And then we have the Seronoble School, which prior to the May storm, actually was the board's top priority leaking roof to deal with. And we used a process, I say we, prior to my time here, we used a process called the US Communities Purchasing Process, together with the Garland Company, to do the roof at Scaticoke School, what was it, three or four years ago? And I understand from my board colleagues that that went fairly well. So we're, we're interested in using that same process at Seronoble, but I know that there were some questions about that process, as it pertained to soliciting bids at the high school. So I'm coming to you tonight to see, I gather the mayor's talked with the town attorney, and we're, we wanted to make a formal request to use that process to expedite the spec-ing and bidding process. But we wanted to come here first, rather than go through the process and then take questions afterwards. So you've got some background information, and Kevin and I'd be happy to answer questions about that. And if you approve, that's the direction we'd like to go. If you don't, we'll have to go some other way.
So here's a question, and this would apply to what we just discussed and other things. In your contracting, do you ever ask for a not-to-exceed price?
I don't know that we've done that.
Do you ever ask for guarantees of work? And how long do you ask for that guarantee to be based upon the work? I'm not asking you to define each one. But a not-to-exceed contract is a very common thing, for many, many reasons. Obviously, it protects both parties, but I haven't seen that, and I'm curious to know if you have a reason for not doing that.
For the high school, I believe we were asked for hard numbers, so we actually went through the whole bid process at that time.
But not-to-exceed needs to be in the contract. That's, those are words that have to be in. That's the way it goes.
We haven't signed any contracts. We haven't signed any contracts.
But in everything you do, I mean, even in the removal and replacement of oil tanks, and fixing shingles that come off the high school roof, you know, when, when somebody guarantees your roof for thirty years, they usually give you a piece of paper to tell you that, that they're signing the bottom line as you sign your check. And so, we're spending a lot of money in collaboration with the town and the Board of Ed, but it's all the taxpayers' money, depending on what's more determined. So if I'm a taxpayer, and I am, I'm asking why we, we don't do that? Because a contractor worth their salt is able to give you one. That's the real reason for change orders. The real reason that somebody will come to you before it's a tragic situation, and they, you are now stuck and have to spend no money, is you go for not-to-exceed. And that tells them right off the bat, that you mean to pay attention. So I'm looking at this scope of work, which says, any needed repairs are going to be repriced at two-eighty-five per visit. Okay, how, I mean, how many repairs is that? Any number? Five, ten, a hundred? Two roofers at four hours minimum, and make all necessary repairs, photos will be done and sent to you at thirteen-hundred-and-eleven dollars per visit. Okay, so, how many visits? It's easy if it's only one or two, but if it turns out to be twenty-five, then we're talking a whole nother scope here. So I'm just putting it out.
This has nothing to do with replacing the roof.
No, I know that.
Why do we have this?
Pardon? No, I'm talking about, I'm asking, I'm saying, this is a good example, that there's never a not-to-exceed. We never ask anybody, saying you want a hard number isn't the same. And I think that even if this was going to be done, this is just a repair, correct?
Right, we experienced leakage of-
This was the backup for asking for the roof replacement.
Oh, I don't know why we have it then.
So why do we have this?
Yeah.
I'm, but I can't see-
No, I know. This, this is, this is a site visit to check the roof repairs, and two roofers for a four-hour minimum. This has nothing to do with the agenda.
For the high school.
I, I know the document you're talking about, I don't know why you have it.
So do we have the, do we? Go ahead, Katie, I need to interrupt you.
Our, our request tonight was simply to get direction from the council as to whether the US Communities process was legitimate. I gather that the town attorney thinks it is, but we wanted to check with you.
Yep.
Because we feel it would expedite the process.
Right.
Yep.
So, based on the overrun on Hill and Plain, based on the overrun at East Street School, based on the fact that your minutes of the December eleventh facilities meeting, you're throwing the high school roof over to us, it appears, may, perhaps the town should take over this process? Because I don't, I honestly, just being brutally honest, I don't have a lot of faith in the facilities department to oversee the roof replacements.
Because on the high school roof, we are not throwing it over to you.
That's what the minutes said, Mr. Lawson said at the meeting. He said at this point, go ahead, sorry, I need to interrupt you, I apologize.
There was a request for another option to be specked and bid out. That was beyond the scope of the work that we had done, and we thought, since the town was interested in seeing that option, that the town would develop it, so that you would have confidence in whatever that number comes back at. Then we had requested that that option, along with the others that Garland had developed, be back to the Board of Education, so the board could give you its recommendation. Understanding, you spend the money, and so you get to decide ultimately what the, what the fix at the high school will be. But we thought it would be useful for the Board of Ed to see the full spectrum of, of options, including the one that was requested most recently. And then the board will give you its opinion, and you'll do what you think is right.
And when was that feedback given to the mayor?
Regarding?
The fact that you want us to do the analysis of reshingling the roof?
Oh, a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll ask Valerie to look at that.
Yeah, so it says, Mr. Dahl asked if the board was interested in another joint meeting. Mr. Lawson asked what the goal would be. Mrs. Chastain said to be clear that the ball is now in the town's court regarding this project, this is December eleventh. Mr. Lawson said he did not think a joint meeting would move that goal along. That's what your minutes say for the facilities meeting.
My conversation with the mayor was not to put the whole project on your shoulders, but simply to take this last request for a shingle-over-shingle approach, and since we don't have the capability, we'd have to go out and get an architect or get somebody to figure it out.
So as part of your, your, yours, the stand, if I remember right, the standing seam metal roof was just to go over the shingles with no insulation. The asphalt shingles was to have rigid insulation with air pocket. Any energy modeling to see what the energy savings would be in each of those alternatives, to see the price differential, or?
No.
Okay. And is that something that we just don't believe is important as part of the? I mean, Tom, you're more of an expert on this.
Well, I, I was going to say, later on this evening, we're going to be talking to the folks from Celtic about doing an overall energy plan for the town. And a significant improvement you can do to any building, and I mentioned years ago when we did the roof at, at, I think it was, at Surinam, is adding as much rigid insulation to the roof as possible. May drive the costs up incrementally, but the savings on, on energy is dramatic. And that savings, by adding that additional insulation, can pay for a lot of these projects, or a portion of these projects over a series, over a period of time with the savings. So, I mean, one of the first people I would look at would be Celtic, to run those numbers on a, on a true, you know, truly scoped-out roof, that has got as much rigid insulation as, as can be put on it, to retain the heat in the wintertime and deflect the cold, the, the heat in the summertime. So, I mean, we have, we're going to have an expert that's going to be coming up at the end of this. I think, you know, as, as a town-wide, I mean, these facilities are owned, are owned by the entire town. Not by the Board of Ed, not by the town council, but by the entire town. And, and I really think we're getting into an expertise situation here, where we need to have either a Buildings Committee or a Building Oversight Committee, to look at all of these projects in totality, and figure out how does it benefit the town in the long run?
And I'm, I'm open to that. We've had several meetings, and I'm open to, if there are more ideas here that we should consider, we ought to do that. That, that's with respect to the high school project. Our request tonight was about process related to the, the Seronoble process.
So, just to be clear, my opinion is, is that the process with respect to the high school roof was extremely blindered. And, and I think we need to look at every single option with respect to this, so maybe if Celtic Energy's here tonight, there's a discussion ahead with them. So we look at every single option. The, the person, just so you're clear, the person who oversaw your bidding process only gave you two options out of a multitude of options that could exist. So, so I think we owe it to the taxpayers as part of that also, is to see what the potential energy savings are for each option, because as Tom said, you know, you may spend slightly more on something, but the, the savings more than make up for it. So, so I think, when we're spending million, you know, between these two roofs, over four, five, six million dollars, we owe it to the taxpayer to make sure we're building the most cost-efficient, best, best performing roof system for the value.
And what are we building? Are those roofs able to handle a potential solar, solar project? Which I've been in favor of, and, you know, our schools have nothing but open sky above them. You know, a, a very common practice that's going on through what Connecticut has called the C-PACE program, which is where businesses can go out, building owners can go out, and add these energy conservation measures, use the savings there to pay the bond or the note to fund those projects.
One of the options that was developed was exactly that, sir. It's one of the options.
Right, and that, and that's removing, but I mean, you know, when I heard it, and I didn't read the spec, but to have an interstitial space in between the roof, and then, and then a space, and then a, and then rigid, to me is the wrong spec. That spec should be flat on the roof, and it should be a continuous R forty or R fifty on those roofs, which originally, even though, I think at Seronoble, we only went to R twenty-one, which I always thought was a mistake. But I think the more you can really get that spec property, you know, correct, it, it will pay us back in the long, in the long haul.
Couple of things that I might, by the way, I'm, even though I don't live here anymore, I'm, I'm still a taxpayer, a small taxpayer, you know? So I share your interest in making sure we get good bang for the buck. And if there are things we can do, going forward on any of these projects, to sit with you, gather your expertise, and, and refine and improve, we ought to do that. We all have an interest in that. In, in fairness to our process here, we did have a couple of sessions around this table, including folks from the town, where, and I'm talking now about the high school project, where we tried to agree on the options that would be specked and bid, and of course, you need to narrow it to some extent, otherwise you're asking for a hundred different projects. So, at that time, several options were identified, ranging from a, a asphalt approach that did have the, I call it the ventilation allowance underneath, to a standing seam roof, to a standing seam roof that had a solar option, all the way up to including the solar. And I think that was about a, a million-dollar additional cost with a ten-year payback. At that, so those were the options that we had specked and bid. After that process was finished, the question was raised, what about an asphalt-over-asphalt approach? Which you can do one time. By code, you can't do it three times. I don't know why I'm telling you. And, and that option, I said to the mayor, I don't have the capability to, to develop the specs and the bid for that. Would the town be willing to do that? Add that to the menu, all the way up to solar? Give the school board a chance to have an opinion, and then we count on you guys to make the best decision for the town. That's where it's due.
So the goal is getting the, the asphalt, or the shingle-to-shingle costs? That's where we're at with that, because they have the other two already.
And all, all of that, all of that, by the way, is, is on another topic from tonight, which is the high school. Our request tonight is with respect to Seronoble, and would this council approve the use of the US Capitol, US Communities process? Which was the same process that was used, I'm told, to good result at, at Scaticoke some years ago. If the answer is yes, then that would be my intention. If the answer is no, we'll have to find another way to spec and bid that work. That's why we're here.
So, just, I guess my concern is, is, is we go in this same loop that we're going in in the high school right now, where it was in your hands, there were only two, a couple options considered, two roofing options considered with the addition of the solar, I guess that's a third. So my concern is, from a timing perspective, you guys come back to us with two options, the same thing happens again, where we say, hey, why don't you consider this or this? So we're losing time, so I, I'd like to table this, talk to Celtic Energy, maybe talk to some other consultants that are willing to look at not a hundred options, but four or five options that include energy modeling, just to see what the, what the best taxpayer value is.
If that's your pleasure?
Yeah.
You're referring to Seronoble?
Yeah.
Yes. Hi, can I just?
Sure, Wendy.
If I may, just a clarification, because I think the conversation was on the topic of the high school we had, and I just, for the, for procedural purposes. One of the reasons I, at least I thought that this was on the agenda this evening is because we were trying to gather some information and direction, prior to getting the town numbers together for possible bonding. We know that it's outside of the scope of an operational budget for the Board of Education. I think it would be safe to say that the entire Board of Education would be very collaborative in getting any numbers that we all can get together, as long as we make sure that we're not falling in this loop, that there is a clear direction, and that we get this information prior to a bonding package going out, so we're not sitting here another year from now, trying to address this issue, why this happened, what we're doing, where we're going. So, that, that is my understanding why this was put on the agenda this evening, because you requested us to do so. Am I missing that?
When we all sat down and talked together, what the needs were, as we're trying to get and assess our capital requirements, because we're going to have to go to bond authorization, which will be in the late spring, so we're trying to assess what our needs are, what our costs are.
Whether your mo, this motion is acted upon or tabled tonight, however we proceed, I think we, we should have a meeting similar to the one that we had with regard to the high school roof. Invite anybody that's got an idea to come in and say, what are the options that we ought to spec and bid out? So we can see as full a menu as we all want. My understanding is that the Seronoble roof, there are, there probably will be fewer options. It's not amenable to solar, I'm told. We're looking, we're not looking at a full remove-and-replace the roof, which would be very expensive. It's a basically repair the roof in place. But still, even if the list of options is pretty short, we ought to sit here like we did on the high school roof, go around and make sure we've got everybody's idea, before somebody goes out and does the, the bidding work. So we're open to that, no matter how you decide to proceed.
And then as part of that, could you just forward-